And sixty-seven is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mike, second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero, and at this time, I would like to invite our guests Alex and Lucas to come forward. They're from Long Elementary School, and if they could...
Come on up here, guys.
We're gonna, and if the rest of us could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you guys could lead us, please. And tonight, we are recognizing Long Elementary School. And Dr. Christine Phillips, if you'd like to start your presentation of recognitions.
Yes, and Ally, Dr. Mack, come on up. Um, yeah, we, we did coordinate. She went home and, well, it's all right. You would expect nothing else. Um, first, I want to acknowledge that we are not representing our Teacher of the Year because she did, um, have a new job, um, uh, better, like, higher, not better. No, not better. She wanted to become an administrator, and we didn't have any openings. Advanced it. I couldn't think of the word. So that was Dr. Christine Anthes. She now works for the Clayton School District, but I did want to acknowledge her this evening. And now I'm going to ask Ms. Vicki tomorrow to come on up, please. Woo! Ms. Vicki has a lot of fans, and for good reason. Vicki is the epitome of someone who will do anything that you ask of her. She consistently goes above and beyond for her students and truly cares for them. She knows how to connect with kids and get them motivated. She always has a positive attitude and a smile. This year, she was tasked with being a long-term substitute for our Social Skills Program, and she jumped right in. She worked long days and nights while going to school full-time, and she was prepared and exceptional every single day. Vicki is welcoming and kind to all students and staff and collaborates well with others to best meet student needs. And I didn't say this, but she's a paraprofessional in our building. So please help me in recognizing Ms. Vicki.
Congratulations, Vicki. Well, we have a certificate here recognizing you as Support Staff Person of the Year, and then we have a certificate, twenty-five dollars for spirit wear on our online store. So congratulations. You're welcome. We're gonna get a quick picture. We're gonna slide that way a little bit, so we have the arcs to the background.
All right, Mr. Alex, if you want to come on up. All right, so this is Alex Niehoff, and he is a third grader at Long Elementary. Um, Alex has shown tremendous progress over the past few months. He has learned how to advocate for himself with academic and social settings. He is self-aware when he needs to take a break or rethink a solution to a problem. Alex has big ideas for the future that he will implement using his perseverance, problem-solving skills, and the help of Colin Davit. Um, I am so proud of his accomplishments and cannot wait to see everything else he will accomplish this year. Oh, wait, Alex, come back. We have something for you. You didn't really get nobody.
So, Alex, we have a certificate recognizing you as a member of Lindbergh. So congratulations. And then you can never have enough Lindbergh swag, right? So here you go. You gotta do some shows, yeah?
Alex, 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 we're gonna do a picture. Last thing, I promise.
Right here in the middle. If you want to hold your certificate up, you could. There you go.
All right, it's now my privilege to call Lucas Jones up. All right, Lucas is a fifth grader. Can you believe it? You're a fifth grader at Long Elementary, and Mom is already crying. But for good reason. This is amazing. Lucas, it has been the utmost pleasure to watch you grow at Long Elementary. Lucas has grown socially, emotionally, and academically. We couldn't be prouder of the strides he has made. Seeing him on a daily basis, you remind us that it's a journey, and you've inspired us with your journey so far. We trust that Lucas will continue to inspire and awe us as he tackles adversity and embraces many, many successes. We cannot wait to see what you do. We're very proud of you.
Now, Lucas, we have a certificate for you.
Thank you, Long Elementary, and we will take a short, few-minute break so that people who came for the recognition portion of the meeting are free to leave if they don't want to stay for the...
You guys are more than welcome to stay.
Less exciting things.
It's exciting. Better job offer.
So, item five-point-zero consent resolution. We have one consent resolution this evening, National School Counseling Week. Do I have a motion to approve the consent resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Christie.
Second.
Second by Matt. Are there any questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Six, oh, any opposed? Six-zero. Motion passes. All right. Citizen comments regarding agenda items. There are none this evening. We will move to seven-point-zero communications. Ms. Vedder, calendar of events.
Thank you. Lot shorter than last month, concerts and things, but, um, some of the district events for this month are, on January twenty-third, we have our Technology Board Advisory. The Finance Board Advisory meets on Thursday, February ninth, and then we're back here on Wednesday, Wednesday next, oh, that's right, Wednesday, February fifteenth, for our regular Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. And do any board members have a report of meetings, state, parent group, or anything else from the past month?
Um, I attended some of the visioning sessions with, with two of you on the middle school, and the Farmers Club, and I found them very inspiring, and a lot of people have a lot of really great ideas for how our facilities can improve in the future.
I was able to, um, attend Project Based Learning, PBLs for high school social studies. And the era that they were displaying was the Gilded Age, and I had to look this up. So it's eighteen-seventy-seven to nineteen-hundred, and then the students, they had to create a poster board with their information in there. And then, um, we were able to interview the students, and they gave us information about their projects. Um, super, just so much knowledge, and the students put so much effort into these projects, and so it was fun to see. It was fun to get back out into the schools and see things like that. So, that's what I did. Thanks.
All right, uh, seven-point-zero-three announcements. Ms. Vedder?
We have, yeah, we had five candidates have filed for the three-year terms of office, and their names will appear on the April fourth ballot as follows. Matt Alonso, Christie Watts, Andrew Lawson, Paul Lineweber, and David Randleman. A Board of Education Candidate Forum will be held on Monday, March thirteenth, at six-thirty PM, where candidates will have an opportunity to share their views, and the community will have an opportunity to submit questions. This will be held both in-person and available on the district's YouTube channel. And our last announcement is that the Lindbergh Leaders nominations for two thousand twenty-three are open. Every year, we have the honor of recognizing individuals in our community who generously give their time, resources, and talents to make Lindbergh an exceptional school district and an outstanding place to raise and educate children. The Lindbergh Leader Award is our district's highest honor, recognizing excellence in leadership and service. Any community members may nominate an individual for this distinguished award, and nominations will be accepted through January twenty-seventh. You can see the district's website for more information, and then there will be a banquet held on April fourteenth.
Thank you. We do not have any Board of Education member appointments this evening, so we'll move on to the MSBA Board Report. Colin?
MSBA Board Report. We begin the new year with a look back at last year.
Not because they are easy, but because they are hard.
In the early nineteen-sixties, John F. Kennedy was touring NASA headquarters. During his visit, he encountered a custodian mopping the floors. Kennedy asked the employee, "Why are you working so late?" The custodian replied, "Because I'm not mopping the floors, I'm putting a man on the moon." The takeaway being, the day-to-day work of all connects to the ultimate goal. That mentality was on full display in your work in two thousand twenty-two. In public education, the vision of a better future for all communities and a mission that strives for the success of all students is as audacious and aspirational as ever. But the day-to-day work from school leaders across the state throughout some of the most challenging circumstances served as an inspiration and will continue to guide us. There were many challenges to be faced in two thousand twenty-two, but once again, engaged community champions rose to the occasion. The two thousand twenty-two legislative session convened on January fifth. Once again this past year, the advocacy efforts of Missouri's school board members had a significant impact on legislation and policy being considered on the state and national levels. Along with parents and community members, local school leaders made their voices heard and advocated on behalf of students and districts across the state.
We have to be an advocate for children across the district. And so when I think about it, I'm advocating for the children that don't live in my house, that don't have a mom that might show up to something and might not know all of, you know, how they can express themselves. So I can be that voice.
Last year, it was as apparent as ever that teachers make the difference. Not all heroes wear capes. Some look just like the rest of us and are hiding in plain sight, inside the four walls of our Missouri classrooms, making a difference and igniting the spark inside students every day. As teacher shortages struck many districts, communities and school boards around the state worked tirelessly to create solutions to uplift and protect the teachers making a difference.
My school board supported me by engaging in tough conversations, some very intense fellowship. That concept of being a champion for our public schools and of being a champion in our public schools, and I appreciate all of you for being both of those things.
Our Boards of Education in Missouri are diligently working to find solutions, and we will continue to do so as we strive to strengthen that workforce. Now, our work is not done as far as the commission. Uh, the next thing we really need to look at, and I, I know there's not a school district in the state of Missouri that doesn't, hasn't come across this, but, oh, another committee is, is formed to look at the culture and climate.
Ultimately, one of the greatest factors in determining whether or not school districts achieve student success is an engaged and effective local school board. The day-to-day work of implementing policy, board training and development, and ensuring school safety is the work that places schools and communities on a trajectory to the best possible future.
Oscar Wilde has a great quote, one of my favorites. He said, "Experience is the best teacher because it gives you the test and then the lesson." And we've learned a lot these last two years, and I think we need to celebrate that. Celebrate the things we did well, um, learn from the things we didn't do good and failed at, and move forward and, and celebrate those.
As the year wound down with the two thousand twenty-two MSBA Annual Conference, former NASA astronaut Dr. Bernard Harris reminded the audience at the second general session that the minds of students aren't limited to just reaching the moon, they are infinite.
Uh, one of my favorite sayings is that I'm an infinite being with infinite possibilities. And when I'm in a group of students, I will actually force them, especially high school, force them to repeat after me that I am an infinite being with infinite possibilities. That they come into this world with certain skills and abilities that are uniquely theirs, and it's our job to nurture those things, and it's your job and all of our jobs to use education to add to those talents that they have. But the most important aspect of this notion of being an infinite being with infinite possibility is this, that each and every one of you and each and every one of them was born for a reason. And we have to help them discover what those reasons are. I can't think of a, a better thing to do, uh, for our young kids but to enable them, to empower them, to be whatever it is that they want to be.
In two thousand twenty-two, MSBA was proud to stand side by side with each and every one of you in supporting our local schools, and we will continue to do so in two thousand twenty-three and beyond. The day-to-day work continues as we look ahead not just to the moon, but to the infinite possibilities of a new year.
Because that challenge is one that we're willing to accept, one we are unwilling to postpone, and one we intend to win.
Thank you, Colin, and I skipped over seven-point-zero-four, review of upcoming Board of Education meeting agendas. Ms. Vedder?
Thanks. Um, it's like we said before, we're scheduled to meet on Wednesday, February fifteenth, for our regular board meeting at seven PM. Some agenda items include the National School Social Work Week Resolution, A-plus Schools Program Assurances, and a couple further records on school climate and communication plan, and then we will be, um, celebrating and recognizing Sappington Elementary.
Thank you. Eight-point-zero special reports. We will begin with our cabinet updates with Dr. McKinney.
Thank you. I feel like a bit of a broken record, but our HR committee meets as needed. Uh, this month, we met kind of an online meeting. Um, the committee was emailed the personnel report for the month, as well as a summary, uh, of our recommendation for our new Director of Safety and Security. We will meet, uh, in February as scheduled. As the hiring season begins, those meetings will be much more regular.
And Joelle?
Um, our finance committee meets, that met prior to the meeting to go over all the financial statements. Um, this is, again, the time of year when the finance and business department gets busy ending one year and getting ready to plan for the next year. So we talked about that process and the big things that are coming due. Inflation rate, CPI was a big one, and that hit the marker this year, this month, which is six-point-five. So as we know, that's the most we can grow, um, in our assessed valuation. So that's the first key mark when we look at revenue, um, for next year. Um, our fini, our facilities committee met, um, they've met twice this year already. We're diving into, um, our facility needs so that we're planning our future no-tax-rate-increase bond issue in April two thousand twenty-four. Um, we gathered information from building principals and their teams, um, on items that they think improvements need to be made in their building. We were over, went over reports that have been prepared over the past couple of years by our architect on equity and campus circulation, and we just continue to dive into, um, what is our next facility needs, and we have some big ones.
Thank you. And Dr. Sparks?
Technology Board Advisory has not met since our last meeting. We meet again on Monday. Teaching and learning met last week, I think it's last week, I'm getting my weeks confused now. Um, and really focused on preparing for health curriculum revision. So the first step in that process is to start to identify priority standards. So the teachers had not gotten together yet to begin that process, so we really started with the Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, giving feedback after looking at the standards as to what really stood out as being most essential to ensure that our kids master as they go year to year through health curriculum. For our Student Life Board advisories, we talked about tonight with social-emotional learning, that's been a ve, very big focus of student life. And last week when we met, we, um, disaggregated the data by student groups. So we looked at the social-emotional learning data, um, based on, um, student demographics to see what type of patterns existed and to use that to kind of further how we support our students. Um, we also had an opportunity to talk about just the different layers of support once we have this data. So how do we look at it from a, a district level? How do we look at it from a school level? And then how do we look at it as an individual student support? Um, I have to say, student life, um, it's a great example of student engagement because we had a student who brought forward her own experiences as a part of the conversation, and it really spurred a lot of, um, conversation around how to be an inclusive school environment. So it's, it's really a testament to how important student voices are as a part of these advisories.
Thank you, and we will go to eight-point-zero-two student report, and before we do that, we're gonna play our video.
Make sure our students are kind of involved and experiencing kind of district governance, and that as a board, we can get their perspective as students. You know, the decisions we are making are affecting them, so we want to make sure that where we're going with those decisions is something that is important to them and is working.
I actually found out a teacher sent it to me through email. I love Mrs. Costelli. She was like, "I just think you'd be such a great fit for this. You're so passionate. I would love to see you apply." I am president of an organization at the high school called CAP. We work on, uh, making our education resources more accessible and equitably distributed throughout the high school. So for me, it was just kind of like a natural transition.
Yes, we have like student data and stuff, but for me, um, really things like equity in education, like inclusion, diversity, those are some of my, like, biggest passions in life, and I really want to pursue that with this position.
Both were involved in a lot of clubs and had stepped up into leadership roles in various activities in clubs. And they both kind of talked about how they could use that experience to help other students and, um, kind of be their voice.
I think that it gives a really great insight into what the Lindbergh Board does, and I hadn't like ever seen what our administration does on the outside of the school scale. I think it's super important because, I mean, truly, the board is there to serve the students, so like, why not get their opinions and their advice?
Yeah, it's been really cool, actually. Um, we met recently with, um, Dr. Lake, um, Tara, like Beth, all of them, um, to just help like define the role, like kind of nail down what we want to do with this because it's really like up to us to decide like what we want to do, what we want to explore, like that kind of stuff. Yeah, I would love to see it continue. I mean, like, I know Althea will probably be in, um, conversation next year since she's going to Wash U, so I really hope maybe like we could almost form some sort of like group of these like student representatives and then like help like mentor and influence each other so we can really just make it the best it can be.
Great job, you guys.
It was a great video.
Very nice. Are you ready for your report? Thanks.
Um, so I'll start us off today. Um, in terms of general events at Lindbergh, the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition has been making preparations for Lu, for the Lunar New Year, which is a Sunday. Specifically in our school, they are setting up decorations, will be passing out red envelopes to celebrate as a means to promote and spread awareness for API traditions. Um, additionally, Black Student Union is making preparations for Black History Month as well. Um, similarly, one of our comp sci teachers, Dr. Shearing, as well as Lindbergh juniors and seniors, are in the process of creating a Girls Who Code chapter to encourage recruitment of underrepresented groups for computer science and STEM as a whole to bridge a major gap of learning. Um, in other news, the Science Department is sponsoring a tutoring program for incoming freshmen and sophomores to help them transition into high school, especially since on, online learning has heavily altered the way that these students learn and participate in their learning. Um, and then finally, the comm, the communications internship I discussed at our last meeting is official. And today, actually, um, students went to an informational meeting during power lunch, so hopefully that can bridge the communication gap between students and parents via platforms like Instagram. And I'll hand it over to Althea now.
A group of students at the high school called CAP is in the planning stages of an Equity Night on March first. Uh, we are working with Dr. Mason, uh, as she discussed in the Board of Education workshop. We are also collaborating with different districts to make this a community-wide effort. The organization also recently received a Lindbergh Foundation Board grant, and we're really proud of that. And recent slash upcoming competitions in the next few weeks are speech and debate, mock trial, science lipid ad, and Scholar Bowl. mock trial, science lipidid, and Scholar Bowl.
Thank you. We have action items by consent 9.01 to 9.09. However, there are no items under 9.05 this evening. Would anyone want to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.09 noting there are none for item 9.05?
So moved.
All right, motion. Motion by Megan, second by Mike. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero, and then I will turn it over to Dr. McKenney.
Okay. Thank you. We have a special introduction tonight. And tonight's board agenda that was just voted on, the district approved the hire of Lieutenant Randy Jimmerson as our new Director of School Safety and Security. And Lieutenant Jimmerson is with us tonight, so if you'd stand for just a minute so everybody can see you. Congratulations. Mr. Jimmerson brings with him 25 years of experience in law enforcement, 28 years in the U.S. Army Reserves, and he'll be leading the district's effort to provide a safe, secure educational environment for all students, staff, and families. Welcome, Lieutenant Jimmerson.
Thank you, and welcome to Lindbergh. All right, 10.0, individual action items. We have three this evening. 10.01, intent to use construction management at risk, CMAR. Do I have a motion to disclose the intent to use the construction management at risk method for various projects related to April 2024 no-tax-rate-increase bond proposition as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Julia, second by Kristi.
Yep, perfect.
All right, and then, Joelle, do you have anything to add or any questions for you all?
I'll just say that this is a first step in planning for the next step in our facility improvements. Looking at facilities, facilities is not something we do overnight, so we've been working with our Facility Advisory Committee for several years to get to this point. So looking 18, 14, 18, 24 months out, this is the first step so that we can get the right team to start working with us in our planning. So take time to plan, do the right thing, and work ahead.
So, but I also think it's important for the board to remember, so the high school was a certain delivery model where we bid, we had a general contractor, and we put out bids and lots of change orders, lots of things like that. We experimented with the CMAR with the gifted center, and that delivery model has been better. And so future bond initiatives, not all the projects in the, in future bonds will be that way, but we've identified some projects that would be in this next bond that we believe will be more efficient with our dollars, less change orders, we know what the expenses will be upfront, and so we're, we're pleased with that model. So that's, that's why we're wanting to get this person and the architect together as soon as possible as we begin designing these future projects.
Any questions? All right, then we will move to our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. 10.02, Prop R LHS Bid Package 4 and 5, 300 Building Demo and Parking Lot. Do I have a motion to approve Vernon Jones as the lowest responsible bidder complying with the terms of the letting for BP number two electrical work and BP number three site work, including parking lots bids in the amounts of 130,500 and 6,57,788 respectively, and direct the superintendent or designate to negotiate a satisfactory contract? Motion by, was it Matt or Mike? Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Megan. Any comments?
Sure. I think this bid package is exciting because it's the last bid package in our Prop R high school renovation in addition. This will, will look to happen as school lets out in May and continue through the summer and be the final step in completing that project. Tearing down the 300 building is a big thing, and then having that actually become parking. So I know our student groups will be happy to see more parking improvements in general. With approval of this, we are going to seek, on the first part, on the demo part, to go ahead and put that back out. We did put that on here as an option this bid, and we want to reissue that, so that will go out. And we also plan to sit down with the vendor that gets awarded to look at some value engineering at these, with this project. So this price is really our bid price, and we are looking for that to go down as we finalize it and actually issue a contract, so.
And like everything else, the last few years, the price of asphalt, if we would have done this a year to 18 months ago, I mean, almost half. So when you look at the index and the price, so anyway, so we will get it to where it needs to be and where we can get it done, but it's like, like we've talked about change orders, and this is our last bid. Luckily, we didn't have to bid the entire project during these escalation in prices and things like that. So luckily, it's just getting us here at the very end, so, but we felt good about the bid, that we can work with that number, so.
All right. Anyone else? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. 10.03, Resolution to Reimburse Capital Expenditures. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to reimburse the district fund balance accounts for capital expenditures related to and incurred prior to voter-approved passage of non-tax-rate-increase bond issue proposed for April 2nd, 2024 as presented? Motion, motion by Julia, second by Matt. And then bear with me as I read this resolution. A resolution determining the intent of the Board of Education of Lindbergh Schools to reimburse capital expenditures in connection with acquiring, constructing, improving, furnishing, and equipping district facilities. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lindbergh Schools as follows. Section 1, Lindbergh Schools, the district, expects to incur capital expenditures in connection with acquiring, constructing, improving, furnishing, and equipping school facilities, the project, on or after the date hereof. The district intends to reimburse itself for such expenditures with the proceeds of voter-approved bonds or other obligations to be issued by or on behalf of the district, the obligations, within 18 months of the date of passage of this resolution. The maximum principal amount of obligations expected to be issued for the project is $1,500,000. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the Board of Education, passed by the Lindbergh Schools Board of Education this 19th, 19th day of January 2023. Any comments?
No, I think the resolution says it all, page for page, but this will help us get to start working with our architect and, you know, future contractor to plan for facilities that we need 14 to 18 months out, so.
And what this allows us to do, instead of, you know, if we are successful and our community supports that, it doesn't then, okay, it passed, now we got to plan for the next nine months or 12 months before we actually see things happening. So we've identified a few projects that if we're successful, that we're calling shovel-in-the-dirt-ready types of projects that we could do, you know, right that first summer, so.
I have a comment on it. I agree that I think you have to start planning sooner, and you need to, this spending some money now to plan will likely save money down the road without having change orders. But I also have the comment that we are in a year where we only had a balanced budget because of, of, what was it, the personal tax on the vehicles? And so I would ask that we try to be a little, not, not just cautious and not have it all roll out at once and wait and make sure that, that we are able to spend this money and that just because we're passing it now, if, if the finances turn around, if taxes don't come in when we think they're going to, that we, you know, it doesn't have to keep moving forward if, if we, if we think that it's better to spend that money elsewhere.
Paste spending, paste and plan, yep. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes six to zero. We'll move to 11.01 for the record. We have some other reports under 11.0201, and that will be Dr. Sparks.
Well, I'm actually going to invite Dr. Ronnie Zagora up to present to us on CTEGICS. I always have to work on how I pronounce that.
You notice I did not say it.
I felt like I just needed to be vulnerable and put it out there if I mess up what it's called at some point in time, and really to talk about how this is a crisis communication tool that will really support our students and our safety.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm excited tonight to talk to you about CTEGICS. Many of us in this room have seen a demonstration or learned more about it, and I think we're all very impressed and very enthusiastic about the added layer of safety that it can give to our students, our staff, our families. Next slide, please. So historically, you know, I think we've come a long way in recent years when it comes to shoring up our safety responses, our prevention, our protocols, and so I would say, you know, our students and staff have never been safer, but there are always layers that we can add. And as we look at what are some barriers in the past to very efficiently and effectively communicating in a crisis situation, or even, you know, a minor safety emergency, a medical, medical emergency, something like that, we have often seen that in our schools, some of the barriers are not having quick access to communication. So maybe you're not in a space that has a phone, you're not near your computer, we don't have our handheld radios in every classroom, or even necessarily in every adult's hand who's outside the building. And oftentimes, when we're talking about student safety issues, that the adult who's present is managing that situation, and they need to stay with the child and take care of the situation at hand, and so that triggers a delay in getting help and communicating elsewhere. You know, maybe you're sending a student down the hall to an office or asking someone to call for help. And then especially in, you know, our worst-case scenario that we practice, if we're talking about a lockdown or an evacuation scenario, the communication piece has always been kind of a relay of, I would notify this person who hopefully would call the office, and then somebody's dialing 911. And so it, what we see in this crisis alert system is something that can really streamline that and make communication immediate for any kind of crisis situation, from a minor altercation or medical emergency to, you know, an unsafe intruder in our building. Next slide. So I'm going to show you a brief video that explains what the CTEGICS Crisis Alert System is, and then I will share our process.
Every second matters in an emergency. The CTEGICS Crisis Alert System gives staff members the ability to instantly report emergencies and appropriately respond to any situation that may occur on a school's campus faster than ever before. The most likely use of the CTEGICS safety system will be the three-push alert, used for common situations that require immediate medical, as well as prevention and intervention in student altercations. But the CTEGICS system is also built to deal with the worst-case scenario, a school intruder or active shooter emergency. A total school lockdown can be triggered by any staff member on a school's campus by repeatedly pressing the crisis alert badge. This type of alert immediately notifies the local safety team, district personnel, and all local law enforcement of a dangerous threat on the school grounds. The Crisis Alert System also gives school administrators the ability to broadcast emergency codes to the entire student body on and off campus in the event of a major emergency at the push of a button. The new CTEGICS Alert System uses the latest in emergency response technology to ensure the safety of its schools.
So I have a demo badge here that I am going to pass around. You are more than welcome to push the button three times, you'll feel it vibrate in your hand. It's not linked to any system, so don't worry, you're not triggering any kind of alarm here. So we've spent a few months researching this system. So Dr. Lake brought it to our attention first, and it had been implemented in districts in other parts of the state and other parts of the country. And at the time, our safety coordinator, Terrell Baker, did some research and reached out to some of those districts that had been using it this school year and got overwhelmingly positive feedback from those districts that it was in fact living up to what it purported to be. So we had CTEGICS come in and present to our cabinet and to some district administrators. We were all similarly impressed with, you know, the capabilities of this system and how it could improve our response in emergency situations. So we broadened our audience, and we asked CTEGICS to present to a larger group, and that group included teachers, other building administrators, school safety team members, our school health staff, as well as representatives from our local police departments. So they demonstrated the product and talked about the, the advantages of this system, and the feedback from everybody that was part of this review process was very positive. Next slide, please. So what we heard from those who reviewed the, the system was that this answers a lot of the questions that we get from staff that are a lot of what-ifs. So when we run safety drills with our teachers, when our safety team meets, there are many scenarios of what if I'm here and this happens there? What if I'm not in a classroom? What if I'm outside? What if I'm in the cafeteria? What if I'm the only adult who's present? And so having this badge around your neck, which would be worn by all staff members, teachers, support staff, all adults in the building, it takes care of those what-if scenarios. It sends an emergency alert, and the, the type of alert would go to a designated group based on whether it's that three-push alert, which is a medical emergency or a student safety issue, or that multi-step, eight to 10 pushes of that button would then alert everybody in the building that the building was going into lockdown. So it eliminates some of that on-the-spot decision-making that we find that adults often have to do of, do I stay here with the student? Do I try to get somebody else to take the student? Do I, do I send someone down the hall? The type of notifications that it sends out, especially in that lockdown scenario, it's multisensory and it's multimedia, so there would be lights flashing, alarms sounding, a message telling everyone in the building to go into lockdown, as well as immediate notifications on our devices, on our computers. And so, you know, if, let's say typically you may have pushed an emergency call button or called an office, if there's no one on the receiving end of that, this takes care of that problem, because everyone who needs to get the notification gets that notification. The badge is small, it's simple, it's very easy to use. They did share that originally there was a, there were multiple buttons on the badge, and that was too complicated, because when you're in a crisis, you just want to be able to do the one thing that, that's in your hand. And so they've streamlined their product, and the, the feedback from the staff was, wow, that would be so easy. It would just clip right onto the badge that we wear all the time, and it would always be available. It doesn't require a lot of training to use, so even when we have temporary staff in our building, substitute teachers or others filling in, they would have access to a badge and could use that with very minimal training. We've also run into issues in the past with having some dead zones in our buildings when it comes to Wi-Fi or cellular communication, and so because this uses so many different channels of communication, it's a nice workaround for that. And again, it's direct, so it gets rid of that relay of communication from person to person to get the response and the help that you need. So we are, like I said, very enthusiastic about hopefully bringing this system to Lindbergh. Next slide. So next steps, we are asking the board in February to take up consideration of adoption of this system. It would require some significant technology integration, and our technology team has been involved since the beginning of learning about CTEGICS and making sure that it is something that would integrate seamlessly with the systems that we already have, so that process would, would pick up and continue. We'd have some onboarding and some training for, not just for staff that are using it, but for those administrator user groups who would receive those alerts and get that notification so that they could respond appropriately. And ideally, we would launch this at the start of our next square. Any questions?
Does this notify within the school? Is there something that goes out to the local fire, police?
So that, so the intruder, the lockdown alert, if you're pushing it 10 times and it triggers the full building lockdown, that signal, that communication also goes out to first responders.
In the scenario where a teacher's doing it the three times just to alert, like I need another adult? The person coming doesn't actually know what's going on at all?
No, so they don't know what they're responding to necessarily. They do know the exact location.
Okay.
And so then, you know, at that point, hopefully they can, you know, if they need to call down or grab a radio and try to get more information. So ideally, all hands on deck, whoever's available is going to respond, and then, you know, if they need to call in reinforcements, they would, but they would get there more quickly than they do now.
Right.
So you see this a lot with school districts in the South. It started as a result of the Parkland shooting, is, after that aftermath, there's been a few districts on the Kansas side of the Kansas City metro area. I don't know anyone else in this region in St. Louis that would have this technology in their schools as, for safety for students and staff. And I think just like Ronnie described, I mean, there's so many times as a building principal, you know, you would hear something over the radio and you couldn't quite hear it, but just that immediate response of, I can stay with my kid if they're having a seizure in my classroom, and I can push the button three times, and the nurse knows which classroom to go to, and they immediately go there. And so just, we just see it as just another layer of how we can improve safety in our buildings for just those everyday kinds of things that happen, as well as the, that horrific thing that, God forbid, would ever happen in any of our in any of our schools. So as well.
It's not tracking anybody through the day, though. It's only Geo locates them once they push it, right?
That was, that was a question. It's only when you're in our building that we know where you're, and it doesn't, it only does it when the button is active. So when the badge is active. So like, for instance, if you're gonna go to the teacher's lounge and eat your lunch, it doesn't know that you're in the teacher's lounge eating lunch. Or if you're gonna go down to the gym or go to the bathroom, they don't know, you know, it doesn't do that. It would only know if you activated that badge where you were on that campus. So. And the badge will work, if you're a teacher at Lindbergh High School, and you are at Long Elementary doing something, and you have your badge on, and you activate it, it will, it follows the badge. So.
I would also just say that Carrie Turick, who's our NEA president, was part of the committee. So she would be happy, I'm sure, to answer any questions. From a teacher perspective, who's here tonight, if you had any.
So does it work off-campus? Or does it kind of like shut down?
Only on our campus.
So it has to kind of connect to our?
The technology. And again, as we do with other school safety things, we don't want to put everything out there. And they don't want all of the kinds of technology that they use. It's technology. It can locate you where you are on, basically, I don't know if I'll use the right term, it's like a, yeah, a bubble around a Bluetooth kind of thing or whatever it is. So, yeah, perimeter. Yeah. So, yep. Something like that. There you go. Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
Invisible fence.
Geosphere?
Geo-fence.
Geo-fence. There it is. Geo-fence. Yeah, geo-fence around our campuses.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no items under 12.0 non-agenda citizen communication. And as we already conducted, conducted our executive session, there is no need for 13.0 recess or 14.0 executive session. So we'll move to 15.0 adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Board meeting 1567.
So moved.
Motion by Megan? Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Board meeting 1567 is adjourned.